All right, we were in an executive session, so we had a five-minute break. And so that's why we're starting about five minutes late. The mayor is sick this evening. So we will open the regular session of the City Commission for Wednesday, January 20th. And we'll start with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I didn't do real call.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Here.
And President Smith?
Here.
President Smith.
Mayor Halliday's absent this evening.
Nice.
All right, so the first thing, we do not have any ceremonies or proclamations, so citizen comments.
We do, and I'm just entering them.
Okay.
Paul Edgar is the first one.
Paul, come up.
Ben Hungerford.
Thank you, Paul Edgar, Oregon City. I wanted to, I read the article in the Oregon City News about the Bona Vista Building. And I really want to thank you guys for taking a moment, taking a deep breath. Thank you, Rocky, for some of the good words that were said into there. But I actually sit on the Clackamas County Historic Review Board. And I'm really dedicated to historic preservation. And this is an example of something I hope is found to be a keeper. And let me assure you, if it is, it's not cheap. But Brian knows.
I think we all know.
Yeah. But it's our history. And it speaks to the next generation, to the next generation, to the next generation. And I hope very much that what I appreciated so much, and I just want to thank you, was the attitude. You know, just the attitude that you, that there are people around that recognize that it's important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Ben Hungerford. Name in City of Presidents, which...
Hi, my name is Ben Hungerford. I'm from Milwaukee and...
Thank you.
I've been thinking about this issue for a couple of months, and this is the first presentation I've made of it, but it's, when Portland Public Schools said that their choirs could not sing at the grotto, that's been just churning around in my head for a long time. And we all know that we are not supposed to promote any single religion. Well, what is religion, really? What does that mean? And of course Webster has a bunch of different things go down to it. A cause, a principle, or a belief held to with faith or ardor. Now, we all heard things like, oh, he flosses his teeth religiously. Okay, well, that's something that he does constantly, and that's who he is and does it. Well, that opens up everything to the flying spaghetti monster religion, which you've all heard about in the news, which is very interesting, but it is a noticed religion. So there also is that we need to think about, which people ignore, is there is the religion of non-religion. And that's what I want to think about. And so when people say, oh, this is not religious, well, that is religious. We're just deceiving ourselves when we say that we're not religious. Because everything we say and do comes from our moral character, which we say, this is what I believe, this is why I am doing this. And that is religion. And so when we say, oh, no, we don't do religion here, so when I think of Portland Public Schools, I just go, they're just not thinking deeply. So is what Portland Public Schools District has done is say, our religion is okay and yours is not. So just keep that in mind when you are doing things that people say, oh, no, that's, you know. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
All right, so any changes to the agenda, the adoption of the agenda for tonight?
I have none.
Okay. So our first item is PC 16-016, Request for Continuance, Readoption of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. It's a public hearing. Tony?
Thank you, Commission President Smith, and Evening Commissioners. We are requesting a continuance of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Planning to the date certain of February 3, 2016. The Planning Commission is holding another public hearing on this next Monday night, and hopefully they'll make a decision. If they don't, we will be asking for another continuance at the February 3 hearing. At this point, I would recommend that if there's anyone here from the public who wishes to speak, that you do hear from them. And if not, continue the public hearing to the date certain of February 3, 2016.
Okay, and I think there is one citizen, so we will open the public hearing. Paul Edgar, if you'd come forward.
You gave us the good stuff, now you're going to give us the bad stuff?
Oh, thanks. My name's Paul Edgar. For about 18 months, I was on the Clackamas County Transportation Advisory Committee doing their TSP. And enclosed here is a map of freight routes adopted as part of the concept, regional concept plan. And if you'll see a circle on the map, it shows the intersection of Beaver Creek Road and 213. And it shows that Beaver Creek Road and Highway 213 are strategic urban freight routes. This is important because it, this is about economic development in economies and jobs. And you have to realize that what you're seeing and what's there is that any decision that affects the congestion levels at Highway 213 affects a lot of people. It affects the economies of Molalla. And so what I included here is a letter from Linda Eskridge, and she is on the school board in Molalla. Her husband was on the Transportation Advisory Committee with me, and they are very aware of this. The problem we have here is they're concerned that the tax base and the economy and jobs in Molalla can be directly affected and influenced by what happens if we don't solve a problem and actually create a concept plan that takes into consideration the needs of the rest of the area. This could be easily, can be, and/or someplace else. And so what we have to do is understand that. Well, then, here's my little statement, and I'll read it to make sure I get the words in right. We need better vision and planning skills to avoid more blunders in Oregon City. Oregon City is attempting to reconstitute and approve the Beaver Creek Concept Plan approximately eight and a half years after it was initially approved, whereupon it was appealed to the state of Oregon's Land Conservation and Development Commission. It has been remanded back to reassess what is needed in infrastructure requirements. We need this concept plan, which identifies permitted uses, global zoning over 245 acres. 128 acres are identified as industrial zoning and can tie into linkages between the business community and Clackamas Community College, which opens doors to creating skilled people for new jobs. To make this happen, Beaver Creek Road must be upgraded, where we have infrastructure necessary to achieve the planned vision identified in the concept plan. This will require needed upgrades to the road and highway system, water and sewer system, which includes solving their inadequate carrying capacity and other constraints. State Highway 213 is the lifeblood of this concept plan, and to all of the people and businesses north, south, east, and west that depend upon it. It is a strategic, regional, urban freight route, and critical to the carrying capacity of this highway. This carrying capacity cannot be degraded. The vision and dreams embodied in the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan cannot be achieved without the development of new highway interchange with Beaver Creek Road and Highway 213. What was previously envisioned for years needs to be again. It is a flyover, overpass diamond interchange where Highway 213 goes under Beaver Creek Road. Also, there is the need for Beaver Creek Road to develop the infrastructure for five lanes on Beaver Creek Road, two in each direction, and the center turn lane out to Henriesy Road. To be in compliance with the Clackamas County Concept Plan, there also needs to be adequate right-of-way set aside for a multi-use bike path, and that's reflected to go all the way out to the...
Paul, you're way over already, if you can wrap it up.
Okay. These roads and improvements become the spine for Clackamas County's offices, from Clackamas County offices on the west end to Henriesy Road on the east end. With this spine, there will be the needed fiber optics, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and city water infrastructure. Without identifying how to make that happen, or this happen, with the funding mechanism, this concept plan will probably be appealed. And again, that's wheel spinning. We do not need to kick this can down the road again.
Okay, thank you, Paul. All right, that brings us to general business. I guess our library update's going to come sooner in the meeting tonight.
If we could...
Are we gonna?
We just...
Oh, we gotta close.
Real quick, so we'll enter in the map, and the testimony that was provided is exhibited into the record. And then we also received a letter from Ms. Linda Eskridge. It'll be entered into the record.
Okay.
And a Craig Lowridge. Did you get that one as well? That was attached. Oh, okay. There was an email that was sent out this evening as well. Linda's letter was included in that, and then a Craig Lowridge letter was included in that, that will be entered into the record.
Okay. And we'll make sure these are in the record when it eventually does get to the City Commission.
Okay. Close the public meeting. All right, and we're now moving on to general business.
Do we talk about that at all?
What?
Please continue it to the date certain of February 3, 2016.
Motion.
Well, I would like to make a little point first.
Okay.
Okay. So we have, because this, I brought this up a long time ago about that 213 Beaver Creek Road, and I mean, it's, it's very expensive, but I, we still have to consider it. But we have to keep in mind that we've hired the best consultants to help with this plan, and they provide worst-case, best-case scenarios for those, for Beaver Creek Road especially, because I was questioning that too, as a few of us were. And that's what we rely on, is these consultants that do this every day, and they can run all the scenarios about how this is all going to happen. That's kind of who we rely on. So anyway, that's my thoughts there. So if anybody else anything, we can have a motion now.
Yeah, a motion to continue.
I move to continue.
So move. Second. Call, vote?
Yes. Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye. All right. Now, general business. 16-017 Library Building Project Change Order, O3 to Guarantee Maximum Price, GMP. Maureen?
Good evening, President Smith and Commissioners. Tonight, we have a request in front of you to increase the price of the guaranteed maximum price for the contractor by close to $150,000. This change results from us starting the permitting process at the 90% documents, and then going through the entire process and actually learning what needed to be done through Public Works and other. And this is the increase that we have anticipated through contingency funds, and we can cover, but we do need to make that change to the contract. Charlie Baumann, our project manager, is here, in case you have any questions that I can't answer, or other information that you'd like to know about.
And to be clear to the public, that's contingency within the budget for the library, not building, not city contingency, so this was in the budget.
Right, exactly.
Do you want to come forward? Thank you.
I think that's a good point that Rocky made, so we're still in budget.
Oh, yes.
We're still in budget.
Yeah, absolutely.
Charlie Baumann, representing Shields Obelis Johnson. I'm your project manager.
What a great job he's doing.
Brian, thank you.
Yes, we're well within budget. This was a plan, we had this on the schedule from the time the schedule was initiated, that we would submit for permits with 90% documents, and then establish the GMP upon those 90% documents. We would then wait for all the final plan check comments, wrap those into the 100% documents, take out our erasers, fix any problems on the 90% documents, so that when the 100% documents were issued to the contractor, they were as complete as we possibly could make them before construction. So we established the GMP on the 90% documents. When we issued the 100% documents, we gave them to the contractor, said, is there a difference in cost here? He came back with 100 and something pages and said yes. So we asked the design team to vet all of those costs, and we went back and forth with subcontractors, who made some significant changes, but this was the number we landed on. So this doesn't really represent anything other than we had a 90% set of documents, and now we have 100% set of documents. And then there were two other changes in the change order that were less than, I can't remember, sorry, I don't have those numbers right in front. You got it.
One was the Kone elevator at $13,117, and then the other was the battery inverter, which...
Failed in the library, and we were going to use that battery inverter to, as part of the system. So we were putting a new battery inverter in the addition, using the old battery inverter in the Carnegie. And of course, the battery inverter in the Carnegie failed. So we did a quick redesign, abandoned the battery inverter in the Carnegie, upsized the battery inverter in the addition, ran all the wiring differently, and that's the net result. But it's going to be a brand-new battery inverter. And then, as a temporary measure, we installed temporary emergency lighting in the Carnegie, so we met code. So that was part of the cost.
Any questions?
Well, and the other part of that is that at 90%, we are allowed to start construction as all these other discussions and were going on. So that's the nice thing about 90% drawings, that we can start construction and then figure out all the rest of it as we go along here and stuff. So I think it saved us four or five weeks or something.
Oh, it saved us at least a month, and had we not done that, our floor slab would not have been paved.
Would be very wet.
Before the rain hit. So in hindsight, it turned out to be a really good idea, far better than we ever imagined.
Well, good. Yeah, I really thank you for bringing that idea to us, and it's really proved to be beneficial. So that's great. There hasn't really been a downsized to it, has there? Just a couple of little surprises, but that's probably, probably good.
Well, we're roughly 40% through construction, and we have more than half of our contingencies still remaining. And that's a little bit beguiling, because when we finish the addition and we move the library from the Carnegie to the addition and then remodel the Carnegie, it's like starting a new project. So we need to make sure we go into that phase with contingencies remaining. But at this moment, there's no reason to believe we won't have contingencies remaining.
And one thing really great about having an experienced project manager like Charlie on board is that he could anticipate that we would need these contingencies, and he's put them in the appropriate places. So that, you know, it's really just a matter of moving money around, and it's not unanticipated. That's really helpful to me.
It's looking great.
So the bottom line is, all of this is going on within the budget envelope, and the budget envelope is not challenged significantly at this point in time, and nor do I expect it to be before construction is finished.
On budget and on schedule?
On schedule's an interesting comment. We had, we had the contractor, we had the contractor relook at his master schedule, and just yesterday, he confirmed that the schedule that he did last year, or earlier in the year, last year, still holds. So they managed to work through the wettest December on record in the area and hold their schedule. So they're doing a terrific job and fighting some really unbelievable weather while they're doing it.
Well, good, because I'm looking forward to that ribbon cutting. Good work, thanks.
Me too. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Charlie.
You bet.
All right. I guess we're at the consent agenda.
We need a motion.
Oh, we need, gosh, I'm sorry.
Please.
We need a motion, little detail, I guess we're going to pass after.
I move that...
Do you want to do it? Go ahead.
Sure. I move that we approve the Library Building Project Change Order Number 03 to a guaranteed maximum price.
And second.
I second.
All right, call for the vote?
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
All right.
I used to sit in one seat over. It's a lot different.
Well, that's what the problem is.
Well, something. All right, consent agenda. I was trying to get through, you know, quicker than...
Oh, that's what it was. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The mayor goes on so long.
You're trying to, you're trying to break his record, isn't it?
All right, consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull an item off the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
We already did that.
Good. Oh, second.
Okay, moved to second.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
And Commissioner Smith?
Aye. All right.
Abby's is coming back to town, huh?
Okay, how do, is that on there? Yes. So that rumor's been going a long time. People at school have been talking about that for a while.
Yeah.
I'm so excited about it.
It's one big dang pizza parlor, that's right here.
All right, communications. City Manager, Tony?
Thank you. I'd like to announce an opportunity to work with one of our local schools for Read Across America. It's time to read across America again in celebration of Dr. Seuss's birthday. Will hurt be able to join us this year. Gaffney Lane Elementary will be celebrating on Wednesday, March 2. Each volunteer will read to a small group of children, kindergarten through fifth grade, in 30-minute sessions. Our sessions begin at 8:30, continuing throughout the day till 1 o'clock. The school tries to involve as many of our neighborhood businesses and professionals as possible, and would love to have you as part of our day. You may bring some of your favorite stories to read, or choose from our library collection here at school. If you're interested, Commissioners, you can contact either Katie or myself. Also, to contact at the school is Susie Warner at Gaffney Lane Elementary. Our next, we'll now have an update from John Lewis.
I just wanted to give you a quick update on Drive Safe Oregon City. So it's a program that our Transportation Advisory Committee has sponsored and really kind of brought to staff as an idea that we could move forward and help, because most of the conversations that we get with the, thank you, Katie, that come before the Transportation Advisory Committee are related to neighborhood speeding and distracted driving. So up here pretty soon, will it get brighter, Katie?
Yep.
Okay. So this is the city website for this Drive Safe Oregon City campaign, and really, it's kind of a grassroots effort. Other cities have similar campaigns where they're trying to encourage folks to drive slower. We can enforce that. We can sign it. We can make our roadways as safe as possible, but you're still going to get folks that just have a tendency to speed and tendency to drive while distracted. So the focus is pretty much on speed, and with, I think, an important focus on distracted driving as well. These are three art pieces that we actually worked with a police officer from Oregon City Police Department, who has an eye for artistic messaging and graphics, and came up with those three messages. The TAC liked this one the best, and we've talked to the McLaughlin neighborhood about utilizing that graphic in their neighborhood as a test for how best to distribute the materials that we are planning to use. So speaking of materials, we've got a brochure that is now available on the website, but would be available when going to various events, whether it be a farmer's market or the police event for Neighborhood Night Out. So it's kind of, this is a tri-fold, so envision this being your cover, and, you know, messaging about how to get the radar trailer. We've got several things at our disposal that can be used to help send the message of driving slower, but it's just been a challenge for us, because most of the speeding traffic isn't from outside of Oregon City. There may be those that are outside the Oregon City area that are speeding as well, but it's usually folks that are right here from Oregon City that are going from one neighborhood to the next, on their way, on their way to their, you know, life's meetings or needs. But they're typically, once they get out of, well, maybe even in their own neighborhoods sometimes, they speed, but once they go through other neighborhoods. And I think McLaughlin gets the brunt of most of that, so it makes sense to kind of start with them. And they have been the most helpful in sharing their concerns with that particular program. So that's, that's one little item that I just kind of wanted to share with you and make sure you knew it was on. Our intent is to use these signs, and we're working with B&amp;B Leasing. They're actually willing to partner with us and sponsor some of the costs associated with using these in more of a sticker fashion that would go on their recycled debris bins and garbage bins, so that they wouldn't be out there, hopefully, all week. So most people bring those in and out. And so the idea would be to have several stickers made that would go on that recycled debris bin, and be a weekly reminder to drive safe, or, you know, not drive distracted. So the TAC asks that we bring this before you and inform you to get some buy-in, because we're kind of making some decisions through the TAC with allocation of, I wouldn't say a lot of funding, because especially with B&amp;B Leasing helping to sponsor some of the costs associated with the stickers. Shouldn't be very costly, but we're pursuing cost quotes right now, so I don't have a good number for you for the dollar amount, but that's the plan.
I think this is great. I think that the city's taking the lead, and I think it's really important. I've seen citizens out with their own signs, you know, holding them up as people drive by, and I, I mean, while that's very commendable, I think it's really important for the city as a whole to take the lead in this, and say, this is important to us, and we want to educate the public, and try to do what we can. So this is, this is good. Thank you.
And I think a consistent graphic will help reinforce the message.
So Chief Band, what's your thoughts here?
So I'll add a couple things, because the traffic, there's a lot of things to traffic, and is there a fresher, it might be new to some people, but we have, I've said this a time or two sitting here, I'm not, I'm not sure who all was here at the time, but we were looking at a grant one time. I was trying to figure out if we were going to get a grant we'd applied for, and one of the criteria were, had to do with our crash stats. And so I called ODAT, ODAT to see what our crash stats were. I told the analyst I was talking to, told him what city I was from, and as soon as I said Oregon City, he said, oh, I know about you guys. And, and what we had learned was that we do have high crash stats in this city. Since then, it takes a long time to hire people and get them out on the street, but you have seen in, in some hiring that we did for, for this year, this falls into the big picture of this, along with what other things are we doing to combat traffic safety in our community. My goal has been to get a three-person traffic team. We have been so understaffed for so long that we were always filling bodies so we could answer 911 calls. And we're kind of getting to a place where we can now afford to put some staff toward that. We've got one full-time officer who we recently had to pull and put in back in the call rotation. We've got one full-time officer who we recently had to pull and put in back in the call rotation, because we're down some and people are having babies. But, we have hired the second officer, the second traffic officer. So, inside of the next year, what you're going to see is, our staffing levels have gotten back up. We're going to have two full-time officers out there, and their only job is going to be out there in enforcing traffic. One of the things we've found in some of these neighborhoods, it's, it doesn't always matter what stats say about speed. Sometimes people need to see a black and white sitting in their community, making sure that people are slowing down so that they feel safe, and interacting with people. And we've got a retired guy working for us, halftime retired OSP trooper, who's making a lot of friends out there right now.
He's a big freak self already.
But, along with this, the enforcement option, there's also the evade program that one of our officers came up with, the same officer who's done the graphics. And it is for first-time offenders, there's a lot of kids go to that class, a lot of adults go to the class. And in lieu of paying a citation, you pay a smaller fee and you go to this class. Hundreds of people have gone to this class this last year. So, we're trying to educate and not just write people tickets. That's what I love about this thing, is, is not just going at it from the angle of, we're going to have more cops out there writing more tickets, but also educating people. Some of the revenue, by the way, from that evade class is going towards scholarships for kids who can't afford to pay for the driver's ed. Driver's ed class is, I think, three hundred dollars, and it's really beneficial for kids to be able to go to that class before they get a license. And so, we're paying for a lot of kids to go to that with some of that money. So, I think it's great, John's put a ton of work into it, and it's going to be an ongoing process.
Good.
Okay. We've got a blessing, I think, right? Blessing, something like that, to go forward, okay.
Looks good.
Thanks.
And our last update will be from library director Cole.
Yes.
Good evening again. And we have the library show once more. So, so a lot has been happening, it might be a little bit less visible. You know, the stormwater pipes wasn't, were inserted from Seventh all the way across the front lawn of the library, and then this is the end of it. So, they're wrapping that up, and I thought they did actually a really good job of paying attention to the library activity ongoing during all of that. They really tried to keep it open as much as possible. So, anyway, I just thought that was interesting. We're always, the guy that, I don't know what this machine is called, Mayor Holliday's not here, I would have given you more slides, and I take...
Thumper.
The jumping jack.
Jumping jack?
It's been hours.
The same person does it no matter where it happens, and we're just wondering, like, how jumbled his insides must be.
Yeah.
And then, this is the beginning of the repointing work on some of the brick on the back. They have to take out a small amount of the, it's not grout, what is it?
Grout.
Mortar, thank you, in order to redo it. So, it looks really, really pretty. And this is inside, they've taken down now the braces that were up on the walls, and the next to come out will be these concrete things that, these were holding up the braces. So, it looks different, because now it's more open. And then, they're putting in the steel studs, those are, that's what will hold the walls. And these are the stairs that we used to go up onto the second floor.
Breftaking.
It's breathtaking, yeah. And then, here's the slab on the second floor. So, that was poured, as Charlie mentioned, they were really lucky, they got this in like last Monday, the day before it just started pouring down. So, it's, it's there. And, there's two people, you know.
Wow.
Prove it, we're up on the second floor.
I think that's your office, wasn't it, Maureen, right there?
Off to the right of, yeah, of the picture is my office, yeah. And then, I just wanted to throw this in as a library update. Last night, we had Pints From The Past at the Midway Pub. We had over two hundred people attend, and we had Rick Minor there doing a talk about the industrial archaeology, I don't know the full title, but an update on what they found when they went out last summer. And everybody was just fascinated, and this location was great, and I want to send a big shout-out to Midway Pub for hosting us there. It was a wonderful location, and I hope to have many more. It went really, really well. So, that's the end. Any questions about the building or anything? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I have nothing further tonight.
All right, commission, Commissioner Shaw?
Uh, I think, what do I got here? I think the only thing that's, and it's not really, it's related, but I went to that KEX Lions fundraiser the other night at the Gray Gables, and that was, that was pretty fun. You know, that program raises money for children's eyeglasses and hearing aids, and they go through and evaluate all the children in the schools up to a certain age to see if they need, and then they pay for the eyeglasses and hearing aids for kids. So, it's kind of a nice project, so it was a little fundraiser there. So, anyway, that's all I got.
Commissioner Polly?
I was just going to add on the Pints From The Past. It was just, I looked at all the people, and I was just thinking, this is such a great community, that all these people are interested in the mill site and our heritage and what's was in the past and what's going on in the future. And it was just, it's incredible gift, and I just want to thank the library for all the programming that you've done in the midst of construction and transition.
Out of our building, so it's okay.
But, you put energy into programming, and you've kept it going. And then, your partnerships with the moot, Museum of the Oregon Territory and the historical societies and just everything. I feel like the, all of the different, you know, we're coming together and that web is working together. And instead of having organizations over here and there, we're all kind of starting to interface more. I've noticed that anyway, in the past few years. So, I think that's a great step for our city, and I think the Lamont Falls Legacy Project has really kind of brought everybody together, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mengeleberg, sorry.
I went to the impact meeting last week, and they did a preview of the Affordable Housing Initiative, which Commissioner Shaw and I will be seeing a much more in-depth version of in early February. So, they've got lots of creative ideas and best practices and things to think about. So, I'm really interested to learn more about that. And then, I went to the downtown Oregon City Economic Restructuring Committee this morning. And last month, they were focusing on a tour of available space downtown. Now, they're shifting their focus on tackling the parking issue. They did a walkabout on, at night and during the day about on-street parking, as well as potential for off-street parking, and the possibility of approaching private property owners to see if there could be some evening parking on their private lots. So, they're heading that direction. They're also wanting to do some consistent signage, so it makes it easier for people to navigate to the parking that might be. And they are going to be suggesting that a parking garage is needed, so I just wanted to let you know that that may be coming our direction.
Interesting concept.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, and I will say, I was at the Pints From The Past event last night, packed out, as the first one was, but thankfully, I had a meeting there at four o'clock, so I could get, there were people showing up at four, four-thirty, it was crazy. So cool, and, you know, any topic about Lamont Falls, I think it's drawing a crowd, so that was cool. I will say, the only other thing that I have been, I've been going to lots of tourism meetings, and that's a big topic right now that we're all kind of working on. One of the meetings, separate from the tourism meeting, was Irma Tinger Friends Group meeting, which I was sick for that meeting. They are actually very close to getting ready to bring a proposal, I think, to the commission, which will probably be a very, it's not a massive proposal yet, I mean, there's lots of things that I think that there needs, it's a proposal, I think, to get the discussion started about what that relationship might be if, if the Irma Tinger house is run by a nonprofit organization. So, we'll probably, we'll have that discussion, I think, in the next coming months, probably. And I think the Friends Group scheduled a tour to at least go through the house sometime in February. And I think that's it. Anything else?
I did have a question for Mr. Lewis. Since I live in the Division neighborhood, there's been lots of questions about how that project is going, and more importantly, when it's going to be done. So, I wanted to give you a chance to enlighten folks.
So, all the pipe work is done, and we're really left with paving. We're not really in the paving season, so as of today, actually, they had, there was a little diversion that was inside of a manhole that they needed to build, but, and they've got a little bit of testing to do, so compaction testing and some testing on the pipelines themselves. But, the construction work is done. While we haven't officially lifted the moratorium in that area, if there were a developer that came to us and said they wanted a permit, we would issue that permit. So, that's the second moratorium area that's on time and completed, and so, we're feeling pretty good about that.
So, in the near future, then, a lot of the construction materials might be disappearing from neighborhood streets?
Right. Yes.
People seem to be a little upset about that.
Yeah. Well, there's not a lot of workspace along Division Street, so we did use the side streets for things like deep trench shoring and piping and the kind of things that are needed on that particular project. We haven't done a project that intense in terms of deep excavation, it was, there's places that were over twenty feet deep. So, it was a complicated project. It didn't, didn't go perfectly, but it's done. And we're, we had another kickoff meeting for the third moratorium project, which is along Lynn, Leland, the Lynn Avenue corridor, so it's near Pearl Street, so that's, that's going to be the next one. And I suspect that one will be, because it's on a bus line, it's going to be fairly, there'll be a lot of inconvenience associated with that project as well. But, contractor's done a great job with a very difficult project.
Great, thank you for the update.
And, I'll put an update on our landslide victims there, evacuees.
So, last I heard, the county had actually, the county housing authority and the social services groups continue to work with, there's, most of those folk, most of those folks have found housing through one, whether, one way or another, whether it be family members or new rentals, or they moved up to the upper units. So, there's been just, there was fifty-one families or fifty-one units with tenants in them that were displaced. And so, as, I didn't read an update today, but as of yesterday, there was like, there was three families that we've been housing in hotels. And there's, my recollect of, some of them are really close, really close, and we're working with the Rotary Group to help support maybe first month's rent or some moving expenses, those kind of things to get them, because they're, they're folks that have some particularly special needs. So, trying to find housing, one of them I know works near the location as well and doesn't drive, so trying to find affordable housing near that same area has been the challenge. So, the county housing authority has gotten some funding approved through HUD, and to help extend some of that a little further. So, between that and the Oregon City Emergency Relief Fund, which the Rotary Club has been sponsoring, I, we feel pretty good about where we're at today versus where we were back at the end of December. So, there has been a lot of hand-holding between counties, community services groups, and Oregon City staff, and, you know, other folks that are, you know, stepping up to volunteer to just kind of help with some of the financial needs of those folks. I want to do a shout-out to the Riverside Hotel, you know, that, that's, I don't know that we need to advertise that, but they've been great sponsors, let's just say that, helping these families who are in great need. So, at some point, we've got to get everybody moved into alternate housing, but there are just some really challenging, and, you know, what's come to light is, affordable housing in the region, not just in Oregon City, in the region, is, is not available. There's not a lot of it. And so, it's hard to place some of these folks, especially if they're, if they're getting assistance with rental or housing funding. I don't know.
Yeah, thank you, John. Appreciate all your help on that, and Wyatt and Tony and all you guys, so, yeah.